Seven o'clock, Congress meeting for order. You stand for the President.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. This is a republic for its change, one nation, united in its soul. And the agreement is as follows.
Hold on, please.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Crowe?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. DeFrancesco?
Here.
Mr. Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Valesky?
Here.
Recommend approval of the attached meeting minutes of August 9 and August 12.
Sirree.
Second. Motion, Ms. Crowe? The second by Brown. Any questions or discussion? All right, unspeaked. All in favor will say aye. Motion passed. Student delegates here this evening. PAEA representative takes us to register citizens' comments. Dan Healy, Cambridge Springs.
I haven't started my time yet. Mr. Chairman, Board, good evening. Before I start, I'd like to just say that the petition from taxpayers and students in the Pencrest School District continues to be circulated through today. There are 752 signatures requesting that this board pass a policy to restrict critical race theory in Pencrest. There are probably 20 other petitions out there, several hundred more signatures to go. As I try to find what I'm going to say to you tonight, I just say thank you all for your service. I appreciate you. Twenty years ago, on September 11th, America was attacked. Nineteen Islamic extremists from half a world away hijacked four commercial airplanes and crashed them like missiles into the World Trade Center, into the Pentagon, and into a field in rural Pennsylvania. Twenty-nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven innocent American lives were lost that day. It was the most lethal attack in history on American soil. But twenty years later, as we stand here now, today, and we find ourselves under attack again, but this time the attack comes from extremists from within. Not Muslims, but Marxists, fundamentalists, socialists, indoctrinators, that follow the religion of secular humanism and seek to destroy America from within. They are hijacking the education system in America. We cannot let this happen. We must stand together against the extremist views of CRT. We must stand strong like the passengers on Flight 93, who stood together and overpowered the hijackers, giving their lives while doing what was right and true. The NEA, Wolf's Pennsylvania Department of Education, Biden's U.S. Department of Education, are enemies of the people. I think we figured that out a little bit just this afternoon. Even more. They are bent on indoctrinating the youth of this country. Their efforts must be resisted. We can do it here in Pencrest. Our policy 105.4 must be our first step in standing our ground. Ladies and gentlemen of this board, please approve policy 105.4 as a standalone policy, clearly stating our position to all of them, including the rogue teachers that are already bringing these concepts into our classrooms. I remember Mrs. Davis spoke... Oh.
She's your virtual...
Mrs. ...
Excuse me, you don't have a phone.
Oh, okay. Well, I remember when she spoke. And she recently said that this alone won't change much, this 105.4. But Mrs. Davis said, "We'll change enough. Change begins at the local level. Together, we can defeat CRT. It's the enemy of the people. Protecting our children from this Marxist ideology of racism and division must be our priority, first in Pencrest, then in Pennsylvania, and finally in America. Start now, here." I remember that Kennedy said, "If not us, who? If not now, when?" We have to stop it. Your teachers, your teachers, have been incorporating CRT concepts into their lessons. It could be that administrators have turned a blind eye, or they were unaware. I don't know. But this must stop. Lessons here, including the identification of white privilege, of oppressors, of oppressed, have been reported and documented here. 105.4 as a standalone policy can stop this teacher activism and indoctrination. So in closing, I believe that you are women and men of wisdom, that you have seen through the smokescreen, and that you understand the facts. The Left has used something called ambiguity increasing. It's information warfare. It's a tactic, and it has failed. I trust in your discernment, and that you will do the right thing to approve policy 105.4, protect Pencrest students, our children, from indoctrination and the tenets of communist race theory. Thank you very much. Mary Shields?
Good evening. Worry Shields here. I was gonna start out a little differently, but I just have to say, you hear a lot quotes and name-calling going around here. So here's my quote. Nazi-German SS officer Hermann Göring said, "It was easy to convince people of stuff. Tell them they are being attacked and denounce them for lack of patriotism, which is exposing them to danger." Works the same in every country. And I think that's what we've been hearing. I need to ask a question, because I understand you're allowed to ask the board questions. So, who all is involved with developing and updating board policies? After all, Pencrest is made up of much more than Pencrest, than just board members. Does anyone else have any quote?
It's comment, it's citizens' comments.
Okay, okay. Well, in the updated, in the policy, board policy 906, it says, "Public comment, public complaint procedures. The board welcomes inquiries, suggestions, and constructive criticism." So, who can I ask this question to, and when can I expect an answer? Who will be the appropriate person to ask that question of?
If you call me.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you very much.
814-337-1630.
Okay, thank you very much. As I was saying, some of the policies need updated in this board policy packet. Says, "The board welcomes inquiries, suggestions, constructive criticism by parents, guardians, residents, community groups, on district procedures, programs, operations, facilities, etc." But, the board itself is not listed on the document. So, my question was gonna be, and I guess I'll have to direct it, how would a resident lodge a complaint against a board member? And how would such a complaint be dealt with to satisfy that complaint? Since you can't answer my questions now, then I will preserve them. The next comment I have is on policy manual, triple zero, local board procedures. It's on page three, orientation, and pages three and four, board member education and training. It's all in the language. And I'd like to know how residents are supposed to know that board members are complying with this policy, and anybody that cares about this district should look into this policy. Because I believe some revisions are in order for accountability's sake. There's words in this policy speaking about board member orientation, board member education and training, that say encourage or make available to, when I am saying that you need to look at your board policy, and you need to require, and you need to require the board members to study the required reading that it should be on training. If you want the job, then you need to have required reading and training to make you accountable to do the job. Now.
One minute.
On board policy 900, community, this policy applies to board members too, it says in your policy manual. Board member handed out what I consider to be biased, non-school materials with edited original content, which appears to be an attack on the National Education Association. And according to this policy, 900, did the superintendent approve the distribution of such materials? It was concerning critical race theory. Mr. DeFrancesco, in a July meeting, I believe, said he had the guts to read it, and I did. So I need to have some answers as well on this policy. And I just want to remind everyone here that the parents at Pencrest support the teachers. Time up?
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carla Brown. I am a resident within the district with four children who attend Pencrest schools. The oldest is a senior, and the youngest is in kindergarten this year. I would like to reiterate what I said last month. The best school policies serve as a guide to acceptable behavior and a state conducive learning environment. They should be as short as possible and direct as possible, use plain language, and not overlap each other. They should not assume the worst, and they should only limit an aspect of education as a last resort. I would like to add two things. Number one, policy should be concise enough that there are no presumptions about procedure. And two, a key practice within writing good policy is that if you narrow your language, you should ensure the scope is clear. First, I would like to thank the board for recognizing my concerns regarding policy 109, and changing it on the agenda to a first reading. Thank you. Pleasure. I believe that it is being revised well, but may be incomplete as it narrows the language, but has not broadened the scope. I would ask you consider this at the next policy committee meeting. Second, in regards to policy 105.4, divisive materials in the curriculum. Timestamp 104, 1 hour 14 minutes and 0 seconds, to timestamp 1 hour 16 minutes and 48 seconds. Within these three minutes of video from the previous voting meeting was the first mention regarding this policy. Mr. Brown spoke about creating exemplary policy. The solicitor stated a belief that this policy could be combined with 119 rather than be a separate policy, and asked to be invited to participate during the next policy committee meeting. Mr. Johnston stated this was responsible, and recommended, and I quote, "Kicking it back to the committee," end quote. Since it was further on the agenda, it was agreed to continue discussion later in the meeting. Timestamp 1 hour 43 minutes and 58 seconds to timestamp 1 hour 46 minutes and 37 seconds. This was the second time policy 105.4 was brought up, with Mr. Bullock asking a question regarding policy and procedure, followed by a motion to remove 105.4 from first reading until it was further looked at. This motion was seconded by Mr. Johnston. The newly-elected president, who was the chair for the policy committee, stated he liked the idea of combining the two policies into one, and stated that it should be withdrawn until it can be reviewed with a solicitor, and Mr. Brown is present, as Mr. Brown requested. It was then asked by the president to vote on what was discussed here tonight, and it was passed unanimously. Bringing this policy yet again to the board as a whole for a first reading without a quorum within the committee, and the solicitor not present, could be considered disregard for motions already passed, and is very discourting. Lastly, the reorganization of committees. I agree and recognize that since the new president needed to be appointed due to the resignation of Mark Dero, that this created vacancies within your committees that needed to be filled. I also agree and recognize that the newly-appointed president can assign whomever he chooses from the board to fill those vacancies. However, to completely change everyone on the committees and reassign members of this board three quarters through the school year, when by law you will have to have another reorganization meeting in December, where elections for president and vice president will be held again, is presumptive authority. There was nothing I could find in 1949's Act 14, or within PA Code Title 22 that states this is allowable. If I'm incorrect, and it is listed somewhere, please let me know when I'm finished. I believe it isn't there, because the state laws and codes are designed to contain short language and narrow scopes, to allow localities to decide such procedural things as they see fit. It does not say in our current policies, either way, which is why it is presumptive authority.
One minute.
And it could be perceived as an abuse of power. The only things regarding committee appointment that I read in our current policies is that once a new president is appointed during the reorganization meeting, they will decide committee assignments as soon as possible, and those placements will last for one year. Since protocol is unclear, I formally and respectfully ask the board as a whole to vote whether or not it is necessary for the new president to reassign everyone with only three months left in the current cycle. Policy as to the authority can and should be determined at a later date, so there is opportunity for discussion and appropriate policy changes if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've sat in the audience of these board meetings for years, and last month's board shenanigans are what's making me break my silence. I am a taxpayer, I am a resident, I am a parent, and I am a teacher in this district. My parents are farmers who struggle, my students, my neighbors, we helped struggle at times, but we should be compassionate of all. Members of this board are always saying they're worried about taxpayers, but unfortunately, your actions don't support it. If you were concerned about taxpayers, you would also be concerned about the students, the teachers, who work here and making this district better. A school board is to help all generations of their citizens in their district. It is a thankless job, it is an unpaid job, and it is a place, though, to make our world better, instead of tearing it apart. As a teacher in this district for 25 years, I have been a passionate teacher of primary students, and teaching children to read and love school. When I stepped through the door as a brand-new teacher, I was provided the desks, the chairs, and very few resources to make it all happen. Some of you have been in my classroom and are welcome at any time. However, if you step inside my classroom, you will see my love of books for children. I do my best to find and purchase whatever my students are interested in, in order to light the fire of learning. In the past, as an educator, I have seen this board has been notorious for tearing down the teachers who work here. Now, I'm not here to say that we are all perfect, but neither are you. You question our books, our supplies, and even the words that some of us have. Over the years, and my taxes and receipts will prove, I have spent thousands of dollars on books, and crayons, and paper, and markers for students in my classroom. The amount you allot us doesn't go far when you have to divide that by 20 children in a room, and you tie our hands by making this purchase from a company who charges four times the amount that a big box store could offer. We can save you money, but your policies and your rules won't allow it. You refuse to ask us, and you get your ideas from national news sites, and don't get in touch with the people you employ. You continue to worry about the bottom line, but you forget hundreds of your teachers you employ spend their own money because you don't deem things necessary. For example, last month, you questioned library books. Why would a student want to read a book? The feel of a real book, instead of hugging an iPad, which has been proven to rewire our brain synapses and ruin eyesight? Why, yes, we should teach them how to use our iPads, and we have to. However, this book that we touch and we feel, and should be excited to turn to page to find out what happens, should be rewarded. In the past, you've tried to destroy our libraries, and have almost been successful. We no longer have a special time for librarians to teach children about books than resources we once did. We went from having 55 minutes to 40 to 30, sometimes now we have 20, or sometimes no minutes, because you have cut the librarian's time with students. You may sit there and think, yes, you have helped the bottom line, but you have taken books out of children's hands over the years. You have made teachers purchase their own books in order to teach them and still love reading. For as poor as I grew up, without really knowing that, why my family never denied me or my brother books or an education? So don't sit there and say that you are for the taxpayer when you worry about spending $4,000 for books and for children and your employees. Children should be our top priority. Teaching children to read, write, and understand math should be your priority as well as mine. Making this district our top-notch and figuring out how to make us an award-winning district again for our state scores should be your top priority. Not finding every penny that is spent on buying a book about a president you don't agree with, or figuring out a way not to purchase materials for your workers. Your question should be about what do the teachers need, what do the cafeteria workers and bus drivers need, but most of all, what do the children's need? Children need... Stop your political agendas and your policies, bad policies, and your newspaper articles tearing us down. Wouldn't it be nice to see the headline, "Pencrest School District Scores Are at the Top, and We're So Proud of Our Community"? Get your focus back on children. Please step up to the plate and make your legacy about being on this board of someone who did their very best for all the citizens in your community. For that is what I hope that I do as a teacher, doing the very best for every child in my classroom. And if we can do that, I am sure we will have a much better tax base, because families will come back.
One minute.
Woo! That's a Pencrest teacher!
Before we start the business of the board starts as business, I want to make one announcement. Once the meeting is in progress, the attendees of the public are not allowed to interrupt the meeting at any time, so please, try to contain yourself. If you have any questions in relation to the meeting, you can approach me or any board members to resolve whatever question you have. And we hope that any individual interrupted the meeting will not have to remove it, so please, stay with us and have to be fine.
Thank you. Let's start with the athletic committee. Item A, recommend approval of resignation of Brad Crawford as head wrestling coach for Mayfield High School.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussions? No discussion, let's take a vote. All in favor will say aye. Any opposition? If not, motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval of fallen coaches, Gerald Bowling and Kent Patron as head drill wrestling coach.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Okay, no discussion, let's take a vote. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? If not, motion's approved.
I'd say Coach Patron's out there in the audience. Congratulations, Coach, you're gonna do a great job.
Item C, recommend approval of student athletic travel as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? No? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's approved.
Education Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of a student travel and agreements with junior achievement. Bizztown, fifth grade.
Committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All right, no discussion, let's take a vote. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached Quest PA NTMA Education Foundation grant proposal for Cambridge Springs High School.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's approved.
Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the attached parent-provided transportation agreement. On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? No discussion, let's take a vote. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval of contract student transportation drivers as listed. On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Finance Committee, Mr. Crowe, Chair Carson. Item A, recommend approval of the attached treasury reports.
So moved.
We have a second? We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Questions? Okay, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached dispersments.
We have a motion in the second. We have one more member of Amsterdam right now. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the 21-22 IU Special Education Contract for Hermitage House Residential, $304,175.
So moved.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's approved.
Item D, recommend approval of the healthcare staffing agreement with NLM Healthcare as attached.
So moved.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's approved.
Item E, recommend approval of the attached agreement with NTRC. with NTRC for the rental of classroom learning space at Sagertown High School for the school years twenty-one through twenty-three.
So moved.
Second. We have motion in the second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Item F, recommend approval to open a Pliggett Prime account for accumulation of debt service resources.
So moved.
Second. We have motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Personnel Committee, Mrs. Davis, Chairperson. Item A, resignation. Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Tamara Mutter from Purdue's as a district-wide health technician.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? No outstanding?
No, she wasn't.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the following leagues of absence.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Item C, recommend approval to employ the following non-instructional staff.
Second.
We have motion in the second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Item D, recommend approval to employ Tammy Hammond as a three and one-half-hour cafeteria employee assigned in Mayfield Elementary School.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Item E, recommend approval for a support back support staff employee to access eighty-six bank days effective September eighth.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Item F, recommend approval to dismiss Donna Dennis from Purdue's as a cafeteria employee.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Item G, recommend approval of Bill Mallor as a volunteer for Boise's football program in Mayfield Junior Senior High School.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion's approved.
Policy Committee, Mr. Boleski, Chairman. Item A, we have two policies for first reading. There can be discussion information, but no vote this month. Any discussion?
Just decided that we're setting up a committee meeting, a policy committee.
Yep, we have advertised. A policy committee meeting is September sixteenth at six P.M. in the boardroom at Central Office, which is next Thursday.
Why are we approving this for first reading when it's obviously going to be amended, changed, morphed into another policy? What is the point of having this on for first reading tonight?
I thought it was supposed to be on for first reading.
We don't, if we change it, we can put it on for first reading again.
And you can keep it on first reading for ten minutes if you want.
Mr. Joseph, is that correct? If we, at the policy meeting, if we make changes, then it would not, it would not be for approval. It would be for first reading a second time?
According to the policy.
Is that correct? According to your policy, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
When we met last time, we agreed to fold this into policy one-nineteen. What made the committee decide to override the board's decision?
I don't think the committee had it. We need to have a meeting and discuss it like we said. That's what we put.
Well, then, why are we jumping the gun? Why is it on here? First of all, I want to make a public. The committee did not put this on for first reading. Mr. Boleski, the new policy committee chairperson, informed us at eleven A.M. that we were gonna have a meeting at six P.M. Well, he was the only one there, and he put this forward for first reading. So the policy committee didn't do anything. Mr. Boleski unilaterally put this through for first reading prematurely, in my opinion, and that's what happened.
The policy committee didn't do anything to it. You're correct. Because we did not have members there. It can stay on first reading until we make adjustments.
But the point is, you unilaterally, Mr. President, he unilaterally, all by himself, pushed this forward for first reading without the committee being present. You condone that? That's okay?
Well, technically, no.
Because I can't, I can't address a board member specifically personally. I have to go through you, so I'm asking you. So you don't think that's okay?
No, technically, it's not okay. However, because of the two options, and this is an issue that needs to be put forward, there's no, there's no vote on it. So you.
Oh, you keep saying that, but next time.
There's no action on this.
No, that is the, that is the perfect answer for anything that goes on first reading. Well, we're not voting on it tonight. Well, of course not. That's, it's a, it's a prelude to voting on it next time. It's, it's a way to sneak it in the door. I understand that. My point is, should a policy chairman be allowed to put forth a policy without any of the committee members being present? And you've already answered my question. You said no. So I'd like to make a motion that we pull this off the agenda for tonight until our next policy meeting so that we can get it right. I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
Now we can discuss it, okay? You know, it'd be nice if we followed the rules of Robert's, the rules of the board. You know, you can always make a motion at any time, but we can discuss it before you make the motion. And now that we have, we have a second, now we can discuss it. But we already know what you had to say. Does anybody else want an additional discussion?
I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call it out too because not that I'm just, I'm not for it or anything like that, but we had the last, when we had our private meeting there, we said that we were putting all meetings on hold and we were gonna start reorganizing or rescheduling meetings. I will say that David, it was kind of odd that you threw that in back when the original date was supposed to be there. I thought David did his on hold. I thought that was kind of odd, so I don't know how that looked out. But, no, no, let me finish. And I will say that with Carla's comment, I kind of do agree that with three months left, why we had to upset the out of part and not just finish the way we were set up. Everybody was already on board with their committee, whether a chair or just being on a committee. And now I'm on a committee, I'm looking on the floor, and I'm trying to prove stuff that I really don't know what's going on. So I will say that I'm pretty disappointed in the way that was handled. We have to do better. This is kind of embarrassing the way this is going, so that's all I have to say.
I don't have anything to add other than I'm going to say again that this is not an action. This is only on here for discussion. We're going to have a meeting. We will discuss it. It will go on for first reading when we make adjustments.
I'd just like to say again, the board decided as a whole, we didn't want this on here. We wanted one-nineteen. So I don't know why it would be on here, why one person in a committee meeting would decide that this should be on there instead of something you came up with one-nineteen, which was the will of the entire board.
All I wanted to do is discuss this like we said we would do. No one showed up to the policy committee meeting. We'll have another one with sixteen.
Mr. Boleski. No, that's just a meeting. Debatting with each other, you know. You're addressing the chair, and you firstly gotta ask permission to continue. All right, let's go over these rules.
We voted last month, Mr. Chair, we voted, or Mr. President, we voted to not put this on the agenda and to fold it into policy one-nineteen. Why would it be on our agenda this month?
Hold on, we have a motion right now. What's?
That's what the discussion is, on the motion. Why is it on here if we want to take it off? Why is it on here in the first place? When we voted not to have it on here?
I just take to, to, to the question, to the question that's on the floor right now. What's the motion to make sure the secretary gets the motion? You want to remove one oh five?
The motion is to remove policy one oh five point four from first reading on the agenda tonight.
Okay, that's the motion. Everybody understood that, correct? Any further discussion?
I like my question answered. It's part of the discussion. You told us to address you. So I'm asking you, why is it on the agenda when we decided as a board it should not be on the agenda?
Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Your questions are irrelevant. We're gonna take a vote.
Who determines so relevant? It's about the policy we're talking about. It's about the policy we're talking about. I'm asking you a question about the motion on the floor, Mr. President. You want all questions directed to you.
What's the question?
You can't just decide not to answer a question. If you want them to you, then you need to answer them.
What's your question? I didn't give you permission to answer the question yet. Now you have it. What's your question?
The question is, why is it, why is it on, why is it on the agenda as first reading?
Your question is not relevant to the question on the floor.
The question on the floor is it shouldn't be on for first reading. My question is, why is it on the floor for first reading? It's obviously related.
Do we have a motion to cut to the discussion?
So moved.
No, no, wait a minute. Jesus. He's, he's right. Louis, you're, you're avoiding the question. Last month, we said we were gonna talk about one-nineteen, one oh five point four.
Mr. Brown, the question on the floor is in the motion that Mr. Gooley put.
But this has to do with one oh five point four.
Could I provide some clarity?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure if it's gonna be clear or not. Put him to trial. So, you know, I was not at the August meeting. I'm not really sure what happened. I know I read the minutes. We also had policy meetings regularly scheduled every month. When the committee shifted around, we canceled the committee meeting because Mr. Boleski was unable to attend due to his work. We then rescheduled a meeting for six o'clock. After that meeting, when that, when we advertised the finance, not finances, the education committee meeting this month, we also advertised the policy meeting. So it was advertised. Maybe we didn't do a good job as administration of getting that out. For that, I apologize. I don't think this is as devious as it's made out to be. If we take one oh five four off, in my opinion, we should take one oh nine on. Because one oh nine and one oh five, I put on the agenda because of the conversation we had at that policy meeting, even though there wasn't a war.
Mr. Joseph, I need a ruling from you as parliamentary. We have a question. We have a motion on the floor in the second. Are we, is the board strictly to pay attention to the question on the floor?
Well, yes. The question is whether the question being asked by Mr. Brooks is related to the question on the floor. I think.
It is not related to the motion. The motion that Stricker wants to remove, if it wants to remove, this question is moot.
My own ruling would be that he, that the question is relevant.
Thank you. Any further, any further discussion? Okay, let's have a roll, all in full, and vote.
Just be clear, we're voting on whether to take one oh five four off.
Is that?
Off for first reading. So you're voting to take it off?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brooks? Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Sure.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Di Francesco?
Yes.
Mr. Gooley?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Boleski?
Can I continue with B? Yeah.
Item B, recommend approval of the following policies as listed. On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second. We have a motion in the second. No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
School Safety Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman. There are no items this month. Crawford County Career and Tech Center, report. Mr. Johnston, Representative.
The only thing that I found relevant, we had a student qualified for nationals, but I guess because of the pandemic, isn't able to move forward with that. That was pretty exciting for that student to get that far.
Yes, sir, thank you. Intermeading Unit Five, report. Mr. Brooks, Representative.
The IU Five is getting prepared for the upcoming school year. Presented the comprehensive plan for the IU Five. A comprehensive plan, for those that don't know, is a great tool for a board or an educational institution to create so you can proactively work towards some stated educational or community goals versus being reactive and running down every single rabbit trail that you see. IU Five also served eighty-three thousand meals in the tri-county region through their summer food program.
Thank you. TSB Legislative Board, Mr. Gula, Representative, your report this evening?
Nothing new to report, no.
Thank you. Under new business, we do have a motion. Motion to approve the district joining the lawsuit filed on behalf of Senator Jake Corman and others against the acting Secretary of Health to enjoin the mask mandate order dated August thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, directed to schools in Pennsylvania and firmly to authorize Attorney Thomas King in the law firm Dylan Kamelis, King, Kuter, and Graham to appear on behalf of and represent the district. It is understood that there is no legal fees or cost to the district.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? You want a roll call?
You want a roll call? Let's have a roll call. I don't think we need a roll call. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Questions approved.
Board member remarks? Let's start with Mr. Goulik.
Boy, I get to go first. Um, I usually say good luck with the sports teams, but none of the Penn Crest football teams will lose this week, which I guess is a good thing. Hopefully, we can get that situation taken care of, we get back on the field, get that done. I do want to thank all the speakers for speaking tonight, whether we agree with them, whether we don't agree with them, whether we're indifferent. That's what America is all about. You get up and you state your opinion, and people can agree with it or not, and it doesn't matter. One thing I did want to say, though, is I keep hearing speakers come up here and say, teachers are indoctrinating our Penn Crest students. This needs to stop. Okay? We have a very clear policy about teacher indoctrination. I could look up the number, but trust me, it's there. You can look it up. We have a strict policy against teacher indoctrination. I would really rather not see people come up here and give blanket accusations. If you have knowledge of a teacher and proof that they are indoctrinating students, please contact Mr. Glasspool, Mr. Newman, somebody from the administration, and we'll definitely take care of it. I personally don't think that's happening. There's always a rare occasion where it might. I don't think it's happening. So I really, I cringe when I see people come up here and say, these teachers are indoctrinating our students. Please, if you know of an incident where that's happening, contact the administration. Okay? Otherwise, the general accusations really don't carry anywhere. That's all I have to say this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. After a complete mess of the summer by all of us here on the school board, with all the drama and distractions, we're back at school. Our teachers and administrators keep getting beat up by the board and the public, and the kids are the ones that get caught in the middle in all of this. We keep getting distracted by all the gnats in our face, and we forget about the bear that's biting us in our butt. The focus of this board is on gnats like library displays, controversial policies, or even do we need to follow a legal mandate that we know we legally have to follow? The bear biting us is keeping our kids in school learning and giving our teachers the tools they need to succeed. We need to defend our teachers from unrealistic criticism. Educating our kids is hard enough without adding all this extra nonsense to every single thing that we do as a district. None of the three high schools have a varsity football game this weekend, and we're worried about a policy that's not gonna change one dang thing outside of the voting booth. Kids here in Cambridge are home, their families are scrambling to figure out what to do tomorrow and Monday, and we're busy wondering how strictly do we need to follow Robert's Rules of Order during our meetings, and it's ridiculous. Our administration, teachers, and education leaders bust their tails every single day educating our kids to get called Marxists. Our kids deserve better than all this. They deserve better from me, they deserve better from every single person here. What happened to these meetings is not the main event. What our students, teachers, and entire staff do every single day is the main event. Let's refocus on that. Need to focus on what's important. It's our kids, voting for the future, supporting our teachers, and building lifelong learners. Thanks.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and sharing your opinions with us. We're struggling to try and keep things moving. There's distractions from everywhere, including our governor with his mandates and things. We're doing the best that we can with what we got and keep pushing to take care of our kids. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I will echo some of the comments. I do appreciate you all coming out and those that do take the time to access the policy to be able to speak. That does take some guts. Public speaking is not something that many people like to do. And as Mr. Goulik mentioned, whether or not we agree with one or another's opinions is irrelevant. We are listening, we hear what you have to say, and whether or not we agree, that's what makes our country so great, because you can voice your concerns and your opinions. I do want to give a shout out to Sager Town Elementary. My kiddo, as I mentioned in the work session, you know, with this mask mandate, he has some issues. And seeing Mr. Kaitler here, and I don't know if Mr. Shields is here or not, but I was able to speak to Mr. Shields, and he was able to, you know, talk with my kiddo. And I know that they're doing the best they can. I mean, I can't speak for Cambridge, and I can't speak for Maplewood, but just give a shout out to Sager Town. They are doing the best they can, and I am grateful because it makes a good experience for our kiddos in school. And I know, you know, we have, you know, as I mentioned, a lot of things that are happening, but I really do want my kids to be able to learn without having all these hurdles and obstacles in the way. And my kiddo has that extra blessing, so we have to do a little bit extra with him. But it's just nice to be able to have the support from the administrative staff and the teachers and the counselors at Sager Town Elementary. So I really do appreciate that, and I just wanted to give you guys a shout out. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Brown?
Well, everybody over there has had some pretty good comments, and I'm gonna keep mine somewhat short, I guess. Welcome back to school, everybody. It's nice to see you're going back to school. I'd like to apologize for all the mandates, but it's out of our hands. The Tuesday meeting, we were called cowards, we were screamed at, and very disappointed with people in the audience when it came to that because the meeting before, I gave a speech about we can't fix anything if we're gonna be at each other's throats. You have to understand, these mandates, we have no control over them. We do not approve, or we do not agree with them, but our hands aren't tied. There are consequences if we don't do the mandates. I believe that our teachers, our staff, are working with the kids who are having problems and trying to help them through the situations. But now we have parents that are sending nasty notes to teachers, telling them not to put masks on their kids. Part of the problem with society right now is we don't have to be nasty with each other. We are a small community, even though we cover a large area, but most of us know each other when we're in over. And COVID's never going away. People think it is, it's not. If you think it is, I'm sorry you're wrong. But we can't let this decide our attitudes, our actions towards each other. And we all made bad choices maybe Thursday, or Tuesday night, I'm sorry. But being screamed at, called cowards, and other things was really, really uncool. Elections are up again in two years. Please vote me off the board. For those who want to do better, please sign up and be on the board. I have no problems with that, trust me. I won't miss the paychecks either. So I would just like to ask our community, before you send your kids to school with attitudes, that maybe we ought to think about how these attitudes affect other people. And as one Mrs. Brown said, these kids are supposed to be taught priority. Educating these kids the best we can and giving teachers the tools to do that. It's easy to tear down people because you don't agree with them, but just because you don't agree with them doesn't mean that they're wrong. Let's think a little bit more before we start hollering and screaming and being racist. Up here, we have to do the same. We're no better up here. I'm not saying we are. Wish everybody a great school year. Let's hope that we get over and back to school. And let's just keep pushing hard and get our test scores up and support our staff. Thank you. Well, with this mask mandate, and everybody's upset that we said we weren't gonna have it, but now we have to. The governor put out a list of consequences each one of us board members will suffer if we don't follow. Insurance companies won't cover us, and we're up in litigation, we're being sued by each student's parent on both sides of the fence. So you got a parent that wants their kid masked, and you got another parent that don't. They can both sue me, and I have no protection at all. So that is what basically they put out in the letter that we received today. I just put out, and... So, you know, I don't want to be sued by 200 students' parents. We're doing what we can. There's people trying to fight it, let it work its through its system. The governor did, in the run, with the legislature, tried to stop him from doing it, and it's in the courts, and they're gonna try to work it out. So just give us time. I'm not happy about it. I don't wear, and I don't want to have the kids wear. I know a lot of students that have learning disabilities, they rely on being able to read people's faces to understand what's going on. With a mask on, it really limits them. And I'm sure there's introverted kids and stuff that always think they're getting picked on, and everybody's got a mask on, and they're being talked about, so it's not just regular kids, and it's not just special needs kids, it's, you know, just all of us. I don't want to see us have a mask, so just give us time with that. Mr. Goulik put out a lot of good points as far as CRT and teachers. If there is a teacher that's out there doing it, there's a process to take care of that. So if you know that it's happening, then you need to let somebody know. And just to get back to one point about the books, if you have an expense account and you have 10 people putting in expense account for 20 bucks, and you have one person putting in expense account for 1,000, they're gonna ask a question. That's basically all it was. It wasn't just needling that we need books, because that's not how it was. We just wanted to know, basically, in front of everybody, so it was transparent, why one school had 4,000, while all the other ones only had, you know, a couple hundred. That's all it was. So that's all I have to say.
All I have to add is, again, this mask mandate is absolute garbage. It is so wrong. I'm glad that we're joining this lawsuit, that we'll be in on that. Dr. Glasspool is handling stuff very well. It's been a very rough start to the year. He was handling stuff very well, along with all the administration. So thank you to you guys. But I believe individuals do need to stand up for their rights on this mask mandate. This is not right. It needs to be fought. That's all I can say.
That's it? My turn. About this mandate, you know, back in October 2020, there was a complaint filed against the governor because he refused to, instead of enforcing the law that we already have, which was, which is the disease, the disease prevention and control law of 1955. Well, after a year, and actually after the people decide to take away these terror powers through the SARS declaration, he finally, he finally enforced the disease prevention control law of 1955. And the question is, why is targeting our children? I mean, they have to come to school with a mask on, according to the mandate, then they leave the school without. And the world out there, that's where the disease is, more than in the classroom, but yet he's targeted, he's targeted the young children, and I have no reason why. And then he's threatening the board members individually that if we don't follow the mandate, we're in trouble. Well, I'd like to ask the governor. Governor, there was only one individual who actually violated the Disease Prevention and Control Act of 1955, and that was you, Governor. When you placed infected individual in nursing homes, and most of those people died in nursing homes. You have the same law that you try to enforce children to wear masks. And I'd like to know the reason why. Yeah, because we try to save the children. Now, the question is, if he is allowed to break the law, why are we supposed to follow this mandate? It appears to me that the law is for equally executed for everyone, including the governor. But that's the way it is. So we'll see what happens with the lawsuit that the board finally agreed to approve, to enjoy. The other thing I want to bring to attention to everyone is, today's the 9th, tomorrow the 10th, and after the 10th comes the 11th. That's a 9 and 11. I think we should never forget the date. My hometown was hit hard, and we lost 3,000 people for no reason at all, except as certain individuals, they just happened to hate the United States around here. So let's remember those individuals that perished for no reason at all, and remember that we never know who our friends are, and we have to be aware of what's going on in the world. And I'm sure you finally, you know what's going on in Afghanistan, and that crowd is gonna start all over again. But our duty is to protect the children, of course, to educate the children, all the students from kindergarten all the way to grade. That's our priority. But along that priority, also be responsible to the taxpayer, make sure that the money is spent towards the children and nothing else. Well, I got a lot to say, but for the time being, I think I'm going to just have to drop the discussion and get to you.
I just have two quick announcements. One is that, you know, we're gonna continue to provide the meetings over Zoom the best we can. If you can't make it, or if there's inclement weather, so you can log on, that information's on the webpage. You just need a phone number will work if you want to. Also, we distributed today to each school, the American Legion is holding an essay contest for 6th through 8th graders. Can social media affect someone's life? It's relatively pointed at this time. And 9th through 12th graders, what does the 19th Amendment mean to me? So I know that we have students to participate. I encourage all our students to participate and write an essay. I know that some of our teachers in either English class, specifics, or history, social studies do encourage their students with that assignment. Other announcements, we met an executive session on August 31, September 7, and 9 for personnel negotiations and litigation.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? A move. Second?
Sure.
All in favor?
For first.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
May you sit, Jerry.
Thank you so much for coming this evening.